I'll call the Cultural Order Committee, the whole, for Tuesday, April fourteenth. Let's record show that all committee members present. Item one on our agenda is PL twenty-one dash twenty by Mayor Alio to establish standard workdays pursuant to New York State local retirement system regulation three fifteen point four for elected and appointed officials. Mayor?
This is basically housekeeping. Every year we understand there's the hours for these positions and turn that into the DRC retirement. So it's listed there in the resolution. It's an annual revanche in the afternoon.
Yes, housekeeping is indeed. I can do it over here. Any comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, would someone like to sponsor?
Ask back.
Sponsored by Alderman Witt, but second. Second by Alderman DePaolo. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Page twenty-one twenty is approved and will be referred to tonight's regular meeting. Item two is PL twenty-two dash twenty by Mayor Alio to authorize the mayor to execute a mutual aid agreement with the city of Bradford Fire Department. Mayor?
Yes, we've, well, actually, Fire Chief Tim Richardson has been working on this for the past several weeks and I'm going to explain the reasoning for this and how it will work.
So, basically, because we're intending to work hard to gather our county mutual aid agreement, so we can share resources and time in disaster, those types of things, make it seamless and rules responsibility, those types of things. New York State, we're part of the state mobilization plan, so anywhere in New York State that we get called to, it's relatively seamless. It's an operation within the state. When things get confusing, this work becomes interstate. So now interstate, our best course of action is to sign agreements like these with specific municipalities, so that way we're covered ahead of time if things do get bad and we have to either send our resources there and it's reciprocal, so they send our resources here. So it's just kind of a proactive approach that hopefully we don't need to act on this, but if we do, at least it's done now instead of when we're kind of in our burr.
This is indefinitely, right? It's not, there's not a timeframe?
No, there is mention of COVID-19 in there, but as long as, I think it's a good agreement between the have between both municipalities. Last year, we actually went over to the twenty-two Main Street Fire of Bradford with ladder truck and, you know, similarly, if it happened here, they were not sure without doubt, send their resources out to us. So I think it's one, one for both municipalities and it's just kind of, we're all on the same team and to have the ability to share each other's resources in a kind of better meeting would be easier to do now than to do when we need it.
Chief, have you guys ever conducted a dual training?
Sometimes they're hard because of, just of, when we do train, it's going to be manpower[186.34][186.34]intensive, which manpower equals money and, and you know, a lot of times, both, you know, staffing issues and those types of things. It's something you can work on. We've done mass drills as far as the aggressive deadly behavior drills and the canvases and stuff. We drill on those large, large, a lot of that we do with bigger agencies is more tape and pre-plans and set things in course that way and then hold it. Everybody feels the hand that they're done.
Chief, is there a reverse work ethic or something?
It's part of the same, in a time like now, is, is everything we're doing as far as we expend resources now because of COVID-19, we're tracking it on theme because it will, you know, it is the declaration of emergency, so therefore, we keep track of all of the things.
Do you mind the reverse?
For what situation we're in right now?
Yes.
Your routine fire?
Say, I don't know, fuel ladder truck or something like that for fuel?
No, that would be mutually. Now, for example, the Bradford part, we actually did have to take out fuel, so, and they provided the fuel and came in and certain other things will be, for example, if we use foam, if a cleanup company contractor comes in, we're actually able to bill that contractor for the foam that we use, we give reverse because it's an expensive item.
I'm sure.
Now, that's, that's remains a mutual aid. We provide acts, you provide life to us and it's, it all comes kind of in wash, so to speak. Yeah, Alderman Witt?
Yes, I totally agree with what the chief wants to do. I think it makes a lot of sense because now that Bradford Hospital is under the relevant justice umbrella, we work together anyways. And I know they've brought patients to our hospitals and they're getting used to our ER people, so I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, we don't see a lot of collaboration between the only and Bradford. Obviously, the interstate issue being a barrier, it's cool that we're doing this and no one has to, good, good job. Anyone else? Okay, I would sponsor, do I have a second? Second by Alderman Witt. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, twenty-two dash twenty is approved and will be referred to tonight's regular meeting. Item three is PL twenty-three twenty by Mayor Alio. The common council, as lead agency, concludes that the proposed project for the city of Ollin Infiltration Basin Rehabilitation and Replacement is a type-two action and after full review of the environmental assessment form, determines that the project will have no adverse environmental impact and thus declared negative declaration. Mayor?
We spoke about this project two or three weeks ago, is the repair to the structural walls. We're planning to repair the issues with the south wall of the water treatment plant and replace some of the filter media at the same time. So we've been working on the environmental quality review forms, completed those. What you do is the short form, the period of service to any property for this project is just basically a replacement. We're working with a consultant on a grant application for a vehemence. This is a requirement of the grant application to have our position passed to the seeker. We're just giving it out of the way at this point.
Okay, any questions for Bob? Okay, seeing none, would someone like to sponsor?
I'll sponsor.
Sponsored by Alderman Doherty, but a second.
Oh.
Second by Alderman Panis. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Page twenty-three twenty is approved and will be referred to tonight's regular meeting. We do have some additional items for, that are not on the agenda, three discussion items. The first of which is a discussion on a seeker, the North Union Street street scape improvements project.
These will all be not to talk about.
Yes, another environmental quality review for North Eagle Street project, which is a DRI project. We have nine hundred thousand dollars, one hundred percent funded through the DRI to replace sidewalks and other street scape improvements. There's an active declaration, it's a type-two form of seeker.
Any questions or comments?
What do you need, what do you need from the council right now? Did you just advise them?
Yeah, eventually your resolution passed. We are, I guess, answering to the department, say, they're a funding agency, so we have to have a seeker replaced as part of their review. Of course, Perry does a monthly in order to review for DRI projects. This has been showing progress on that project that is in design and will be in construction in two thousand twenty-one.
Speaking of DRI, can I ask you a question, Mayor? About what you, any, what, if anything, you heard or any feelings you've gotten from the situation with New York State?
Yeah, I did. I had a conversation with, oh my goodness, the language jumped out. Chris Power. Chris Power, thank you. I had a conversation with Chris Power. He said, "We're under contract with all of ours and we should, we should not," you know, "we're under contract, so we shouldn't be buying."
A month ago. Okay. Any else?
So the seeker will become, or the resolution, we do the seeker before the time.
Oh, yeah, that was, okay. Okay, so the next discussion is on a gas energy contract. Bob?
Yes, a few weeks ago, we signed a electrical energy contract proposing that we go on a contract for gas supply and we're going to use the same method of bid as we did for the electric company, which is the Tennessee County bid. We'll piggyback off of that. The company is Rep Energy, they're actually the company that we've been working with for the past three years. Last three years, we had a variable price contract. The expectation was that gas prices were on their way down. We've gone through from starting out at certain points, working our way down over the last three years. The contract was actually inspired when we're working month by month on variable contracts. We discussed signing a three-year fixed rate contract so that variable budget will save, you know, the matter of gas supply is something that I hammerhead, but will save money on our gas supply over the course of that last three-year contract. Yeah, I don't think we'll save that much from this past budget year because the variable price is very low right now, but we will save over the course of the contract probably fifty thousand dollars.
And any questions for Bob?
I was talking to the gentleman at the gas station and he was telling me the price of the gas that's in the tank, like, the gas prices go down, but if the price, the gas that's in the tank that's in the ground, they bought at a higher rate. They keep the rate up until that's gone and then when the new gas comes at a lower rate, the price will go down. Is that basically how this is going?
Yeah, natural gas is very different from here diesel and other fuels. A lot of that is stored in America, in old oil wells, so it's a different market. It's very complicated, but again, supply costs are very low right now, so I have a couple about storage and things like that.
Okay, that's true.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you, Bob. Last discussion is a contract reward for the startups pump station project.
Yes, we've spoken about this project a number of times. This is for a pump house built for about the existing water pump that supplies the startup water tanks. We did the project out last month. Benson Construction was a little better. They came in, helped us up to our budget amount for us to move forward. We're going to have to use some budget money from the water department to keep the project under budget, but we're asking to reward the project with Benson so that we can move forward with awarding plus reconstruction and then when construction market opens back out, we can have that project ready to go.
Bob, how many, how many bids were submitted for that?
We had three bids for that project.
And are you able to say how much lower this bid was than the next lowest?
Yeah, I think they were thirty to forty thousand apart. One of them was significantly higher, maybe eight hundred thousand. This bid was six hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred and sixty thousand, and then we formed a close to that, seven hundred thousand.
Okay. And have we done work with Benson Construction before?
They do a lot of work on Long Street. I don't know if we work directly with them, but they're, this is like a typical job that they will pay a lot of cash and work a lot of work.
Okay, great.
But they do things that are on the projects.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Bob? Okay, seeing none, I would like to both do adjourn, but a second. Second by Alderman Witt. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Also, just want to point one that that is not a resolution, not a problem, the, the Benson. Okay, I will call the board in the regular meeting of the county council for Tuesday, April fourteenth. Will the clerk please call all?
Alderman Witt?
Here.
Alderman Panis?
Here.
Alderman Doherty?
Present.
Alderman Crawford?
Here.
Alderman Anisteha?
Here.
Alderman Gonzalez?
Here.
Please rise.
See you, God. We seek your help with our affairs tonight. Bless this meeting with your divine diligence and help us make the best use of our own. We all have diverse opinions here tonight, yet we wish to make our differences and reach agreements satisfactorily to all. Please share a little wisdom with us to help us do the right by all concerned. Thank you. Thank you for your heavenly blessing. We are named to pray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, reading correctly in approval of minutes of previous regular meeting.
The public, the regular meeting of the Ollin County Council was held on March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty, at six forty P M. Present. Alderman Gonzalez, Alderman Witt, Alderman Panis, Alderman Doherty, Alderman Crawford, and Alderman Anisteha.
Okay, any questions on the minutes from the previous regular meeting? Seeing none, I would make a motion to approve, second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Panis. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Committee reports and unfinished council bills.
We have none.
Any cases for the mayor?
The only thing I have is that you may have read in paper that the Carter's Market is going to be opening up. That is been approved as one of the essentials by the state. There's guidelines that have been set forth on how we can operate it and on behalf of them, we set up a meeting with them to go over that and make sure that they have everything in place. So it looks to be, may send it, I believe, for, I'm a little concerned if this is not over by that time, but with Jack, please, out and I'll, I'll be brought back in.
Nothing else? Misses, ladies, communities?
We have none.
City official reports?
We have none.
Proposed legislations and referrals?
PL twenty-one dash twenty by Mayor Alio, referred to committee of the whole, Tuesday, April fourteen, twenty twenty by Council President. PL twenty-two dash twenty by Mayor Alio, referred to committee of the whole, Tuesday, April fourteen, twenty twenty by Council President. PL twenty-three dash twenty by Mayor Alio, referred to committee of the whole, April fourteen, twenty twenty by Council President.
Obviously, we're not going to call a comment tonight. That being said, I will open a meeting if any council members would make a comment. If you so understand.
Paul, if you don't mind.
Yeah, Paul, go ahead.
I, I just want to bring to everyone's attention that next Wednesday is Earth Day. It's the fiftieth anniversary of Earth Day and similar to our Global Cleanup Day, which we ran in the fall, it would be great if we could try to encourage our residents to get outside and work in their front yards, clean up the subway, obviously maintain social distancing, but, you know, obviously, one thing that people are struggling with right now is the, the distance, the social distance aspect of being from one another. And today, we were standing along the, the road as the Washington West School District. The teachers and the staff drove around neighborhoods in a, in a big caravan, honking at people and just, my wife started crying, so it was really weird. Some people were really quite emotional, people across the street just coming and lining the, the streets. That, that social interaction is being missed. So it would be great, what we're trying to do is, I'm working with a couple of the social media groups to say, encourage people on Wednesday, the twenty-second, to go work in your front yards between eleven and two, you know, interact with your neighbors across your fence, across your street, just try to act a little bit like life is quasi-normal right now. But I wanted to bring that up and I think it would be a, a great effort for, for us to play a part in. That's it, thank you, Paul.
I do have a press release, it's going to lock in there tomorrow.
Oh.
So.
Where'd he steal his thunder?
Great, great minds think alike, Bill. Great minds think alike.
That's fine, but we were, we were touring, we're going to do this.
Okay.
It's, I guess, a good idea, it just came out, so.
Okay.
It's going to work out, but.
Awesome. Please reach out if there's anything that I can try to help push out on social media. I'm happy to, to join forces with you.
It's all this yellow litter around the playgrounds and stuff.
Well, I, I imagine, you know, we can't go out into, get people to go out into parks and things like that, but at least in our subways or things like that.
Well, we've, strangely enough, we've been getting requests for the bags, the garbage bags, the orange ones, the larger ones and cleanup. My wife went on her walk the other day and right around the neighborhood, managed to pick up a bag of berries, so. So Linda, if you're out there alone, you're in the neighborhood, and people want to do that, so, but that's a good idea, so.
And, and Bill, maybe shoot me an email, because I do have all of the bags that were donated to us from that event in the fall. I could drop them off at the city building or something like that. I don't know how you distribute it.
I'm hoping you're going to hold that event again.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I can just hold on to them, but I, because I don't know how exactly you distribute. I got a question from a resident saying, "Could the city provide bags?" But I, I just don't know how you would distribute the bags.
What we do now, we provide the orange ones.
Yeah.
And what we do is they, they basically register with me to go. She gives them the bags and gloves.
Okay.
And we tell them that they can, they can put the orange bags in any city dumpster. Like, I, I put a sticker on ours and just put them in trash, which a lot of people believe themselves. But we do have, we use the fire department's dumpster, when the city garage is open, there's the rec centers, so we do have several dumpsters around that we allow people to dump this.
Awesome.
The other way we're talking about cleanup, the other thing that I had a conversation with Bob yesterday, or this morning, maybe this morning, about maybe opening up Front Street for leaves and branches and that, maybe for four hours on a Saturday, Saturday, and we could staff it and we want to be somewhere out. And I think that might, you know, give people an opportunity to be able to take their grass clippings or leaves or branches and, um, there, so.
Awesome.
Okay, are we still doing the last bunch of the last?
Yes, still, yes.
Because I have lots of folks that are putting them in their junk bag.
Yep, that's, that's coming up. Just started doing those two. We will be going month to month with the Costellas until, until we get the, the bids out. Things just would be, everything being shut down, so we're working on the, the month to month we're done until we get the new bids out. And that'll be part of, I've got several questions on that. Will lawn waste be part of the contract? Yes, would it make that part of the, part of the contract?
Because, and just when you mentioned the front street, I just remembered that being turned into a dump here.
That's why we have to.
That's why we got rid of it.
That's why we have to staff it.
Yeah.
And, you know, I mean, my idea is that we'd be for city residents only. They can, you know, if a person is working, we take down license plate numbers and ask the people to put their names and their address. I have a clipboard and, you know, keep track of it and if we get somebody that's not in the city, we can address that, so.
Send it back.
Cool.
Okay.
Paul, I just have one question. This gentleman called me up yesterday and it's unbelievable, but they said that they did not have a checking account, credit card, credit card, and they wanted to know how they could pay the water bill. And so I was wondering, would they call us, the police office, make an appointment?
Well, what I, what I recommend they do is get money there. So, you know, that's what we're recommending to people.
Get with twenty-first century?
Get money orders and we don't want them to put cash in the box out here. It's, you know, yeah. So the other thing to go on with the garbage, we have been getting calls that people don't want to go out to get garbage stickers, so we're advising them to call the clerk's office. They can buy a month's worth and clerk's office will be around to.
Question, anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we move on to final resolutions. We have none, resolutions? Before we do resolutions, I would make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Second by Alderman Doherty, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, then I would make a motion to amend the agenda to include resolutions twenty-nine, thirty, and thirty-one and discuss in committee of the whole. I'll motion, I need a second, sorry. Second by Alderman Anastasia, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, we will remind you, resolution twenty-six twenty.
Resolution twenty-six dash twenty, PL twenty-one dash twenty by Alderman Witt, seconded by Alderman DePaolo. Resolution establishing the standard workdays pursuant to New York State and local retirement system regulation, three fifteen point four for elected and appointed officials.
Okay, just discussed and concluded the whole. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Okay, seeing none, will the court please call all?
Alderman Witt?
Yeah.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderman Doherty?
Yes.
Alderman Crawford?
Yes.
Alderman Anisteha?
Yes.
Alderman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Question carries seven to zero.
Resolution twenty-seven dash twenty, PL twenty-two dash twenty by Alderman Gonzalez, taken in by Alderman Witt. Authorize the mayor execute a mutual aid agreement with the city of Bradford Fire Department.
Okay, we just obviously discussed and concluded the whole. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Seeing none, will the court please call all?
Alderman Witt?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderman Doherty?
Yes.
Alderman Crawford?
Yes.
Alderman DePaolo?
Yes.
Alderman Anisteha?
Yes.
Alderman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Question carries seven to zero. PL twenty-eight dash twenty, PL twenty, twenty-three dash twenty by Alderman Doherty, taken in by Alderman Panis, but the common council, as lead agency, concludes that the proposed project for the city of Ollin Infiltration Basin Rehabilitation and Replacement is a type-two action and that after full review of the environmental assessment form, determines that the project will have no adverse environmental impact and thus declares a negative declaration.
Just discussed and concluded the whole. Any comments, questions, or concerns?
I don't think we have any.
Actually, no, we do have sponsors for that.
Oh, we do?
Yeah, that's, to be fair to them. Okay, will the court please call all?
Alderman Witt?
Yeah.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderman Doherty?
Yes.
Alderman Crawford?
Yes.
Alderman DePaolo?
Yes.
Alderman Anisteha?
Yes.
Alderman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Question carries seven to zero. PL twenty-nine dash twenty, PL none, that the common council, as lead agency, concludes that the proposed project for the North Union Street Scape Improvement is a type-two action and that after full review of the environmental assessment form, determines that the project will have no adverse environmental impact and thus declare the negative declaration with the responsible.
Okay, so we did just discuss this in committee of the whole. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Would anyone like to sponsor? Alderman Witt, do I have a second?
Yes, sir.
Alderman DePaolo, will the court please call all?
Alderman Witt?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderman Doherty?
Yes.
Alderman Crawford?
Yes.
Alderman DePaolo?
Yes.
Alderman Anisteha?
Yes.
Alderman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Question carries seven to zero.
Resolution thirty-dash twenty, PL none, to authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with the direct energy business for gas supplier services where the figure is made in one, twenty twenty, two, April thirty, twenty twenty. We are the responsible.
Okay, any questions, comments, or concerns? Okay, would anyone like to sponsor? Alderman Anastasia, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Doherty, will the court please call all?
Alderman Witt?
Yeah.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderman Doherty?
Yes.
Alderman Crawford?
Yes.
Alderman DePaolo?
Yes.
Alderman Anisteha?
Yes.
Alderman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Question carries seven to zero.
Resolution thirty-one dash twenty, PL none, to authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with Benson. with Benson Construction and Development LLC for a Stardust Pump Station project, which also is sponsored.
Okay, so, once again, we discussed and concluded the whole. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Okay, seeing none, with Alderman Witt, would you like to sponsor? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Panis, will the clerk please call all?
Alderman Witt? Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderman Dohy?
Yes.
Alderman Crawford?
Yes.
Alderman D'Alito?
Yes.
Alderman Anistehia?
Yes.
Alderman D'Alito?
Yes.
Motion case seven to zero.
Any last comments, questions before we adjourn? Okay, seeing none, I will make a motion to adjourn, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Crawford, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye and opposed.